Welcome, everybody, to the July 13th Administrative Committee meeting. To my right is Jim Boland, to my left is Art Betsy filling in for John Weber, and to his left is Gary Redner, and I am Dan Karst Allen. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Looks like if you're okay with them, Jim, I am.
I would move to approve that, yeah.
All right, we'll consider them approved, Gary.
Yes, sir.
Next up is the Palouse Pride Festival 2015 Approval Request for Beer Wine Garden at East City Park. Dwight, tell us all about it.
Yeah, good afternoon. Well, this is pretty much verbatim from years past. This is on August 8th for the Palouse Pride Festival. August 8th from noon to 4:00. Beer garden, boundaries are the same. They have the police lined up. They'll have the food vendors and live music and other activities there, and there have been no incidents involving alcohol in the past, and that's it.
So we haven't had any issues with these guys as far as with their requests?
No. They fence that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I can see no problem with it.
If, let me...
Go ahead.
How many years is this for Palouse Pride?
Oh, you know, with the alcohol, I'm not, no, I don't know that I know.
I think this was the first year, wasn't it?
Oh, no. No, this is probably their fourth or fifth year.
Is that what that means?
Yeah, maybe more.
Just want to check kind of the tracker.
Yeah, sorry. I just don't know that.
And they're having one police officer there?
Yes.
Well, if you guys are okay with it, we'll...
Gary, you approve the resolution.
Let's go ahead and move it forward to consent agenda?
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Dwight.
Thank you.
Next up is the Fort Russell Reconnaissance Survey Phase 3 Part 2, and Mike Ray is going to present that. Look at all the pictures. You can come play, too.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mike.
Thank you. Afternoon. This is Wendy McClure. She's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and so we're just here today to present a Fort Russell reconnaissance survey and hopefully receive approval to move on to Part 2, which is our, part of our three-phase project with the Fort Russell Historic District. So, just to give a little bit of background about where we've come from up to this point, this all started a couple of years ago when the Historic Preservation Commission applied for and received a couple of CLG grants through the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office, and that was in 2013 and 2014. And the project identified at the time was the reconnaissance survey of the Fort Russell existing historic district as well as the surrounding neighborhood. We'd gone through a couple RFQ processes and ended up awarding through the second one to AD Preservation, which is a historic preservation consulting firm out of Spokane, Washington, the project, and at the time it was two phases for $10,500, and CLG grants covered half of that, and so we were just required to put up a 50% match. Start of the project was around winter of 2013, and then with a completion date of around August 30th, 2014, because the grants run every year and end around that time, but they're allowed to be carried over in two-year phases. And then there was an optional Phase 3 for $4,000, and they ended up completing Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 1 was the existing district, and so right now we have 116 properties listed within Fort Russell. It was originally designated in 1980, so we're about 35 years old on the current district that we have. And Phase 2 included kind of the periphery of the district, ended up being 320 sites that surrounded Fort Russell. And so, just got a depiction here. The red line represents the existing district, and the blue line represents the survey area that we had looked at. Extends all the way down to Sixth Street, and then the properties on the east side of Hayes on the east and D Street to the north, and kind of following the topography of the hillside in the northwest area. And the reason we chose to expand it all the way down to Sixth Street here was when you looked at the original plats of that area, you have the three prominent original plats, the Russell Edition, Russell II, as well as the Park Edition. They were all in the early 1880s, and so that's really why we, you know, originally we were thinking we would cut it off maybe on Third Street and just go down there, but after looking at those original plats, decided to extend the survey all the way down to Sixth Street. And within the survey document itself, each property is, there's a narrative providing site details, they're all numbered, and then a contributing, non-contributing status, but as you can see, there's a lot of detailed information that go into each of these properties, and we're talking about over 400 properties that have, the consultants gone through and documented.
So what's the difference between contributing and non-contributing status?
Within a district, there, within every historic district, there's contributing buildings and non-contributing buildings. Contributing buildings are the ones that still maintain the integrity of when they were originally constructed. Non-contributing ones maybe were, had a giant addition on the side of it which was compromised that original integrity, and so that's really the difference.
And to add to that, there's also a period of significance, and so the first district included properties built before 1930, and we extended the temporal timeframe to pre-World War II because of pattern changes, and so now, you know, that would include, that wouldn't exclude the properties built between 1930 and 1940. That added a lot of material.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
So, this is just part of their research at the Historical Society. You have all the original pictures of that area. Just another example, the Shields House here, and then what it looks like today and what it looked like back then, so not a whole lot of changes except maybe the shingles on the roof there.
Right.
So, that brought us, after completion of Phase 1 and 2, to August of 2014. We had 436 sites surveyed, and then in December of 2014, we had gone to council and got authorization to proceed with Phase 3 of the project, and, which was really finalizing the reconnaissance survey and conducting the public open house component of the project. And so, the following council meeting in December, we ended up approving, or the council ended up approving a professional services contract for $4,000 with AD Preservation in order to complete Phase 3 of the project. And so, the way we had structured that was to divide it into two parts. The first one was the final report of the reconnaissance survey, and really wanted them to narrow down the historical context of Fort Russell. Wanted them to look at historical development trends, you know, did they, did it go lot by lot, and, or was it dispersed amongst that whole area? So they had taken a look at that, really what Wendy had referred to before, the period of significance. So right now, it's 1875 to 1930. Well, that left out a lot of the houses that were built in the 30s because they needed to be at least 50 years of age.
In 1980.
Yeah, yeah, to be historic. And so, wanted them to narrow that down, as well as the contributing building criteria, what we had talked about before, Dan, what, which buildings are contributing, which buildings are not contributing. And then really, one of the larger issues is the district boundary recommendation, and so that was all encompassed within Part 1, and then Part 2, the way we had it structured was the submittal of a National Register nomination, and ended up, you know, an amendment of the historic district. And so, we've recently completed Phase 3 Part 1, and period of significance, we ended up falling on the 1940 date, so extending that from 1930 to 1940 to pick up a lot of those houses that were, you know, built in the 30s. Contributing building criteria, commission wanted to be a little bit more tolerant to some of the modifications that you might see, like for instance, the McConnell Mansion has metal siding that's not original, so we have our kind of quintessential Fort Russell building which has, you know, metal siding on it.
But, you know, when was that put on? You know, that might be a difference as far as the contributor, or does it detract, like you say, detract from?
It generally would be considered detracting, but recognizing that not many buildings are frozen in time unless they're museums.
Right.
Well, that is a museum, and it even wasn't frozen. But, and so, we wanted the tolerance meter to be more liberal, because there are a lot of buildings that have had some changes, but we set the, as a commission, we decided with, in consultation with our state architectural historian, to say, if your grandmother came back and looked at this house, would she recognize that she lived there? You know, and if something's been remodeled too extensively, it doesn't fit that criteria. And so they kind of loosened up the...
The way you're allowing folks to not only kind of keep their older house, but make enough modern upgrades for it to be affordable to live in.
Right. I mean, for example, a lot of houses had cedar shingles, and we were one of the few people who owned a cedar shingle house that replaced the cedar shingle, but it's hard to do. I mean, it's hard to get some people to do it.
Windows.
And so, as an example, windows, windows, if they, they fit the original opening and they have the same style, so they, you know, if you replace a double hung with a double hung, they're, they're happy with it. If you replace casements that are, you know, pasted on muttons and vinyl with something, and change the size.
Right.
Then that starts to put it into a compromised...
Right.
And it's really a value judgment, so it's multiple things that, probably not any one item, but we did get them to loosen up a little bit, because they were pretty purist in their first survey, so...
Okay.
And then just other examples are dormers. You know, a lot of people had dormers that aren't original, but they're still in keeping with the original, maybe character, that's, you know, the scale and massing of the building. And then you have some rear side additions which maybe preserve the front, which is the most important feature of a house.
The street's game, yeah.
Anything you view from, corner lots get hit a little harder, but anything you see from the street is what the National Register cares the most about, so...
And then that brings us to the district, district boundary recommendation, and so once again, we started with the red line representing the existing district. We went all the way down to Sixth Street here, and after looking at all these factors, the trends, kind of character of the area, contributing, non-contributing, development patterns, period of significance, came up with the boundary, which is the recommended boundary highlighted in green there. So it would go, include all the homes on the north side of Third Street, at one extent past Third Street to the south, would include East City Park and Hayes Street here. There is a block or a block and a half of homes that were mainly built within the 50s and 60s, and so that's the reason for the jog there on the east side. And then you have St. Mary's School, which is a new school addition, so we ended up following kind of the C Street alignment here. Ended up going back, and this is really mainly the original boundary that the existing district follows, and that's mainly because of topography. There is a house that they had gone and included on the north side of D Street, our...
That was in the 1980s.
Yeah, State Historic Preservation Officer had said that we shouldn't take that off the National Register, even though it is odd that you jump across the street like that, and so that's why that's remaining, but this is, you know, the commission's put in a lot of months of hard work, looking through all of these surveys, you know, 300, 400 site surveys, and analyzing all of these properties, and looking at it from all aspects, and going back and forth between the State Historic Preservation Office, as well as our consultants to come up with this, and we've had kind of a lot of long meetings to come to this point, and so this, this boundary represents, you know, a year or two of really hard work by the commission, so...
And one of the, just, originally, we wanted something where people could imagine, okay, D Street, Hayes Street, Third Street, you sort of understand geographically what they are, and the reason you see the jogs, as Mike alluded to, is because those properties don't contribute, but also the National Register or the Secretary of Interior wants you to hit at least 60% contributing properties, and it starts to mess your numbers up when you have multiple blocks that don't contribute, so...
Well, like you say, you may have some within the, that are knocking you down towards that 60%, so if you can cut a few out, then it helps.
That's why the jogs sort of happen, because St. Mary's School, for example, is a big amount of material, but it's not contributing, so...
Right.
And you never really knew when you were in the district or when you were outside of the district.
Yeah.
So, you know, when they, you have this zigzag of a line, the way the current district extends, that was really one of our main goals, was to have this more symmetrical district boundary where you could really identify when you were, when you were not within the historic district. And so, we ended up finishing up with, with Part 1 of Phase 3, and that was conducting our public open house component of that. It was fairly well attended. We had it conducted at June 17th at the 1912 Center, and overall, the response from everybody that either was in the district now or proposed to be in the district was really positive. We had sent out a direct mailing to everybody, providing information, you know, a link, set up a project website where we uploaded the reconnaissance survey for everybody to take a look at, and right now, commission's just seeking council authorization to proceed with Phase 3 Part 2, and this will be brought forward next Monday at the council meeting. But I just wanted to go through from here, should the council authorize National Register nomination, from here, we would submit that to the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office in Boise. From there, all the affected property owners that are proposed to be within the expanded district are notified, and then there's a public comment period that's also provided. You know, not only do we conduct an open house and provide this information in public comment, but the state has their same process where they identify everybody that's in the district and send out notification. So once they see the forms and public comments and review those, they ended up, it ends up going before the Idaho National Register Review Board, which meets about one or two times per year, and they're also down in Boise. It's our understanding from SHIPO that June 16th is the next time they meet, and so it wouldn't be until next summer is when they would actually get this and review it, and then from there, it gets forwarded on to the National Park Service and the keeper of the register in Washington, DC, and they have about a 45-day review period and turnaround. So presumably, if the project moves forward, it could be fall of 2016 before everything's complete and finalized, so... With that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
So what's the $2,000 pay for, then, I guess? That's, that we're, or is it 2,300?
Yeah, it's $4,000 for Phase 3, and we divided it up into two parts. The first part's $2,000, the second part's $2,000. So, they've already completed Part 1, which they'll, you know, they'll get paid for.
This is, this is to pay...
Part 2 is for the National Register nomination, so...
And AD Preservation is going to do all the work.
Yeah, all, yeah, $2,000 would cover, it's already been budgeted, and then obviously the CLG grant covers half of that cost, so Historic Preservation Commission has that in their budget for this fiscal year, and so, yeah, every, all the monetary issues are taken care of, and they'll proceed and develop all the forms and submit those on behalf of the city.
We could authorize that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
No worries here.
So, once this is done, are we, I mean, yeah, this is a, we're a year and a half down the road still, but are we looking at different type of street signage in there at some point to help people identify this? Is that kind of the next step?
Yeah, and that's already starting to be programmed in by Public Works Department. It's envisioned that you'd see similar signage as downtown. You have the really nice signs that just went up a month or two ago.
With the different...
But as far as the street signs, yeah, we'll have the flute, black powder-coated fluted street posts, as well as the, we have a logo for Fort Russell, just like we do the downtown historic district, and so those specific street signs that'll look almost really similar to the ones downtown will be developed and starting, you know...
We see East City Park as being one of the gateways in the district.
Absolutely. I always wondered why it wasn't a part of it in the first place, you know, that was, that was kind of weird.
Those signs will probably have the QR code on them, like the ones downtown, which works, by the way.
Kind of give a walking tour then?
I tested that. The QR code that takes you to the website and you get more information than can possibly be put on the sign.
And it gives a walking tour, yeah, yep.
So, forwarding this, we can go ahead and put this on consent?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Great, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next up is the Pullman-Moscow Regional Airport Grant Agreement, and Elisa Anderson is going to present that.
Tony is joining me.
Got some guest stars. Tony Bean's gonna join her.
The guest part of it, maybe.
So before you today is a new contract or agreement for the continuing expansion of the airport, and I, in my staff report to you, I just tried to highlight the main key items within the new agreement, and I'll let Tony go ahead and present to you the bigger picture of how this all fits together.
We've been moving in pieces, so...
It was the first of many.
This is the first of many, so it's an actual project now. We're out of planning and we're actually going to do something. So we've received a grant agreement, the offer from the FAA, I have the offer, and the priority, they put the million dollars of entitlement money that the airport gets annually going towards the realignment, as well as $15 million discretionary. We made the grant agreement, or not the agreement, but the application for 30 million, with the possibility there may be year-end money. It may, may happen, may not happen, but if they do have year-end money, the FAA likes to put it towards higher priority projects, and you want to be prepared for receipt of those funds in the event that it happens, like every other grant that we do. They tell me that they have money, and then they tell me that they need it in 12 hours, and that's always the fun part. So, this actually worked out a lot better. There's a lot more timeframe with this grant than we normally do have. They've asked August 3rd to have it returned. The city of Pullman has already executed on their side pending city council approval for Moscow, and the first phase would be land acquisition to include conservation easement. Design up to 50% is in that first scope. The Vista Powerline relocation is in that scope, and some, some earthwork. We haven't determined if, what that earthwork should be, but it's targeted towards assisting aircraft getting into the existing runway. If there's earthwork that can be done, to get the minimums lower, we want to do that, and we want to make that a priority, because we're going to have to use the existing runway at least for the next two years.
In addition to the, the contract or the agreement, there is also, on your next agenda item that we can also review at this time, is the wetland mitigation conservation easement. That's a part of the land purchase within this existing proposal to you.
Okay, so...
We'll approve them separately, yeah.
Yeah, this, this is just approval to accept the grant?
Yes.
And then the, since we're talking about the resolution for wetland mitigation conservation easement purchase, is the, is the money to help that in this?
Yes.
Yes, it's part of this grant, and so what's happened with the conservation easement is we had to find a place to put all the wetlands that we're going to be removing from the airport, they had to be mitigated. We found one location in Colfax that meets all the requirements. There was a conservation easement, an option to purchase that was executed last year, and now we'd like to move forward. We've had the appraisal, the review appraisal, that did agree, the FAA has done their review, and we have made an offer to the landowner. However, the offer to the landowner is contingent upon city council approval, because the airport board cannot acquire property.
We don't have any money.
It has to be titled to the city of Pullman with the consent of the city of Moscow.
Okay. Anybody's got any?
And as we had through the staff process before, our new software will only allow us to do one agenda item, so we can't do a resolution with an agreement any longer. We have to present them separately, and so...
We're learning. All right, well, we're kind of, they are separate, but...
We'll need to do...
They are, they are kind of the same thing, because they're both, they are tied together, so...
Yep.
Art, you got anything?
No, I think it puts us on the path that we've started, and is a natural progress of the whole process.
How does this, how does the matching money, how does that have to show up in order for the grant to work? In other words, if we're going to take $15 million, don't we have to have the 9% match already in hand before we can do that?
It's pay-as-you-go. So each time we, we expend funds, so if we spend a million dollars, then the city of Pullman writes a check for a million dollars, and the FAA reimburses 900 and...
91%.
Yeah, 91.88%. So, that's how, so it's...
The grant money, getting the grant money from the FAA is not contingent upon having the match money in hand? In other words, if we get that and we never put up the match money, they'll still be reimbursing?
No, they only reimburse...
You have to write the check to be reimbursed.
I wrote, I wrote a check to ABC Construction for doing something, then I submit that, to the FAA that I did that, then they'll cut me a check back.
Only give you back the match.
Yeah, so you're kind of forced.
So you have to come up with the match.
You have to provide them documentation that everything's been paid, and one of the requirements is that if, on any of this acquisition, you have to show a clean title, that everything's been purchased, and the title documents have been all executed before they'll reimburse you.
Okay. So, Gary?
Yes?
Is this something that we're going to have to regular, do on the regular agenda, or?
I would suggest that it be put on the regular agenda because of the discussions that have been had.
Um, and these are still two, with the new software, they're going to be two separate, even though we're kind of, they are tied together pretty directly, with the, with the resolution being part of...
Remember, the grant agreement offers for the $16 million at this point, that's what's been authorized by the FAA. The conservation easement is one element of...
Of that.
...one of the things that will be paid for with those grant funds. So, they are connected, but they're separate as well.
Acquire separate approvals.
Right. So are you guys okay with putting both of these forward to regular agenda?
Yes, yes.
I don't see how it's problematic to approve them as a separate motion at the council.
Here, here, we can go ahead and forward them to regular agenda, both of them, and then we'll just hear them...
If it do pass recommendation?
Yes, well, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, you guys.
Tony, you'll be here Monday?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good.
I will be here.
Please, Tom.
Okay. Item number six, Moscow Farmers Market, non-smoking. Kathleen Burns is the responsible staff.
At Al.
At Al, yes. Got the rest of the commission with you.
Only two of us. We left at least nine behind.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So in your packet, you received the draft, initial resolution that Rod wrote up, and he wanted me to be very clear with you that if you look at the lower section, where it identifies where the resolution would be very specific to, the smoking is prohibited within the boundaries of the farmer's market during the hours of operation and through the duration of the farmer's market season, the first Saturday in May through and including the last Saturday in October. So he wanted to be real clear to make sure that I read that. The other thing in doing his homework, and Rod's not here, he's on vacation, is he wanted me to emphasize to you that this is a policy issue versus a legal issue. So he wanted me to be very clear on that. I brought Erin and Gina with me because we have had some expressed concerns with smoking around food, children, congested area, not just fruits and vegetables, but prepared food, like restaurants, and so, we discussed during a farmer's market commission meeting to bring this forward. So, we're here today.
Okay. What, what, I guess what started it, the whole process, was that, was it from patrons or vendors, or?
We've had, in the vendor policies, there is no smoking by vendors. That's been in existence for years, and so...
What's the condition of the license under where they sell their products?
Under the policies that they operate, that's correct. So again, Rod considers this a policy issue versus a legal issue, but vendors have not been able to smoke, and vendors have complained about people smoking behind their booths. So that's one complaint we've heard, and then we've heard from citizens and customers where people chose to smoke at a food table while someone's eating their meal, and they thought it should be treated like a restaurant. And so, we just thought we'd bring it forward, and looking at the farmer's... And looking at the Farmer's, Farmer's Market Coalition, which is a website that serves nationally, it's a pretty common practice in markets, to be smoke-free, and to discourage smoking. And go back to what Rod also wanted me to say, is it's not a protected class, and there is no right to smoke. So, these are things that he researched for us.
It did come up organically from the commission, when we first started, from people, public health experience, and just the experience of the market, but the laws didn't support it at the time, so we couldn't, we couldn't do it. And now, the laws have changed, so that's why it's coming up now.
Art?
So, if we go through with this, how do you post it? How do you enforce it? How do you deal with people who light them up?
So, it'll be, that's a great question, but we've been waiting to do our entryway A-Board signs into the market. We had a graphic designer design them, and we would put the logo, the no-smoking logo on that. And then, also, we would, our staff would meet with Rod, on, just like the dog issue, what do we say, what do we not say, and how do we redirect a customer who might want to smoke? And where are the boundaries of the market, and how do you exit to the perimeter of the boundaries? So-
And also, what happens if you find intransigent people who are non-compliant?
That's a good question.
Do we not have policemen at the market?
Not every Saturday.
You're not making this an ordinance, therefore, it's not law, it's merely a statement of policy of the council. What you can do, within the boundaries of the market, you have the right to regulate it as you will. You have to remember, it is public right-of-way that is being designated for a particular purpose. You do have some, some issues that, if the policy is going to be that it's non-smoking, then, you can trespass someone out of that area during the duration of the market. Just as you do, if you have someone who is acting out, or doing something in someone's place of business, the owner can call the police and trespass that person, they get issued a warning, and if they come back and violate, because they don't have permission to be there. It's a little bit tougher, because it is public right-of-way. And public right-of-way belongs to the public, and, and it's for transportation purposes, obviously, but the council's been faced with non-smoking regulations before. There was a movement some years ago about banning smoking in public parks. At that point, it was put forth as a health concern as well, and council chose to put signs up prohibiting smoking, or the policy was to not have people smoke around the small children's playgrounds. That was the compromise at that time. The University of Idaho, as you know, their student leadership was talking about perhaps having a non-smoking campus.
Or even tobacco-free.
Yes, and the conditions that, the issues that that arose, of course, is there are public rights-of-way on campus that don't belong, they aren't proprietary to the University of Idaho. So, would they have the ability to prohibit tobacco use on those public rights-of-way? And the answer is no, unless the stewards of the public right-of-way, you, city council, says that you can do that. That's been a step the city council has not wanted to take.
Well, it hadn't got to us, to that point, yet.
Exactly. It's outdoors, so that's been a big issue. Another issue you have here is, you have portions of Friendship Square, where you have the nonprofit wall, or whatever the area is called, and prohibiting smoking in that area might be problematic. You have specific boundaries of the market, and I think Rod's written this fairly specifically, that it would only be effective within the boundaries of the market during the hours of the market. You know, what your hope is, is Kathleen indicated, you hope if you give people notice, advising them the health hazards, and if you don't allow people to smoke in restaurants, why would you allow them to smoke in an outside restaurant? You could make this very specific, and, you know, it's the same issue you've got with smoking in bars. Are you allowed to smoke in a bar now? Not in Moscow, but you can smoke in an outside veranda, that's, you know, outside of 20 feet from a door. I'm not familiar totally with the regulations on that, I can't recall. So, you might be able to do something, the more specific it is, the more limited it is, the more likely it will stand up to legal scrutiny. Saying that it's a policy and not legal is, I don't quite understand that comment. If you're going to take action, other, unless you're just trying to convince people not to do this, suggest to them that they aren't going to do this, you have to have some teeth in it, and that is, either you trespass them, or you issue them a citation. You can't issue them a citation, because it's outdoors-
We haven't made it illegal.
And you haven't made it illegal yet. So, this might be a good first step, to see how it works. It's a statement of policy, at that point, should someone choose to challenge it, you could-
We may go ordinance route, then.
You might, you might, and my suggestion would be that we would have to do a lot more research on it at that point.
Which, here's what I think, let's go ahead, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, this resolution, if we could go forward with that. And if we could go ahead and start studying the next step, should we need to take it? I'm not, you know, we may, this may be enough, who's to say? You know, I'm sure, it's gonna put a little more work for the market manager and his help, to, you know, police it, so to speak. But, you know, maybe this'll be enough to get it done. We're not quite halfway through this season, and bringing this up, and I don't think that there's a lot of people down there smoking, so-
No, there isn't. So, there, it's pretty minimal, but when it does happen, we get a lot of complaints.
It's in the wrong place.
I would hope that peer pressure could also lend itself to the enforcement of this as well.
Some of the research that I've seen on it supports that it's self-policing, or that it's community policing, more than enforcement by a certain entity.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't really have as much of a dog problem. There's still some service animals, you know, and some alleged service animals. That's a whole nother thing. But-
But it's getting better, yeah.
I'm okay with forwarding this to approval.
Yeah, and I think if it's marketed, if you will, as, look, we're passing a policy thing, because we prefer people not to smoke, because it's offensive to some people, and there's a lot of people in close proximity, and we're doing this because we're trying not to make it a law, that would have to be enforced. So, if you could help us out with that, and not smoke inside the boundary, we'd appreciate that. I think you'll get compliance from most people.
Yep, great.
So, regular agenda, I would assume you'd want to get some splash.
We'll have a little discussion and support for it, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen gets to hang out here, this is the rest, the bulk of our agenda, and now, we're on to the reports, and Kathleen is going to introduce our poet laureate.
I am.
And it looks like Donna's gonna help.
Yep.
Support.
Okay.
Tech support.
I'm getting there.
You're just, you're just support, not tech support.
F5, yeah, got it. Six, F5.
While we're waiting, if you'd like to introduce yourself to us, or you're gonna make Kathleen do it?
I'm gonna make Kathleen do it.
Okay.
Because I'm new, I don't know any of you.
Okay.
I'm at a disadvantage.
Well, feel free to be home, because these guys don't bite. So, I'd like to introduce our first poet laureate, Tiffany Midge. I'd like to give you the timeline of the project, which was first introduced, DJ and I went back in the minutes, and it was first introduced January 2014, with the Moscow Arts Commission. Then, we put together a call for poets, which went out January 2015. We had our deadline in March, then, we had our journey, jury panel selection, excuse me, March 25th, in this room. Two folks are with us, Dan Carskallen and Donna, who were a part of the jury selection. And Tiffany did her first reading, June 6th, we had a poetry out loud, and down at the farmer's market, which was really fun. And then, she shared her poetry at the Transit Center on the night of-
Art Walk, wasn't it?
Art Walk, it should be June 13th, so that's an error. But we had broadsides on the bus poetry, and Tiffany read to a crowd of about 60-something people at the Transit Center. So, that was pretty popular. And so, she's under a three-year contract, and part of her contract is to do several public readings, and then, write some prose about Moscow, and then, also to conduct a poetry-writing workshop, once a year. So, she'll probably be speaking again at the Mayor's Arts Awards.
Oh, good.
Yep, so, and when you need a poet.
And you know it.
Whenever, whenever we need one, bring her up.
Bring her up. So, these are two selections that Tiffany chose to read for us today. So, with that, I'll leave the mic to Tiffany.
Yes, it'll be my pleasure. These are two vignettes, and I titled them First World Story Problems, and they're prose, not poetry, but they're poetry in prose.
Hmm.
Okay. Last Friday night, I helped my sister choose a wall color to paint her dining room. I was trying to persuade her to choose earthy orange colors, adobe or clay, but she liked the various beige colors, not colors at all, in my estimation, with names like E Crew, Buff, and Oatmeal. We brushed our various selections to the wall, our sample colors, my fiery earth tones, and her safe boring colors. Because paint dries to a different hue, we sat back in the dining room chairs, and waited for the samples to dry. We stared at the wall, as if it was the most scintillating thing in the history of the world. Then, it suddenly dawned on me, it was a Friday night, and there we were, sitting around, literally watching paint dry. And number two, spring had arrived, the sun was heating things up, and it was time for my family to plant the garden. My mother wanted to put in yellow beans, a type of bean she'd never gardened before. She carefully read the planting instructions, her eyeglasses balanced at the end of her nose, only plant in full, direct sunlight. She looked up from the seed packet, surveyed the sky, the incoming clouds, it was nearing sunset, and soon, it would be dusk. So, my mother put away the packet of seeds to plant for the next day.
So, there you go.
You know, this is, I'll speak to it, this is why, you know, Donna and I, and I think I can speak for Alexander, too.
Yep.
There is that, you know, just that light, that spark, sparkle in there, that humor, and I thought that was just great when, when we, when we did judge it, so.
Oh, great.
I'm so glad that you're, you're part of it, and gonna be here for the next three years for us.
Yeah, we watched your videos.
Some of them might have been a little blue, that's okay.
Yeah, it was good. Thank you, yeah, thank you so much.
So, it was, it's nice to meet you, and we look forward to those workshops.
Yes, likewise, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Good here.
I don't think so. Concerns?
No. Behave yourself before the- Donna came to represent the MAC, so I thought that was good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the order, sir?
Nothing, sir.
We'll consider ourselves adjourned, thanks, everybody.
I'll consider it, W.